Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, family and friends. Also, I want to recognize our city staff who is in the audience today, as well as our city leadership team of Mr. Stephen Carter and City Attorney Lavonda Graham-Williams, and also City Clerk Deborah White. I will also acknowledge my colleagues who are here with us tonight, and I would ask that at this point, we will have an invocation by Pastor Michael Goodman, Abundant Life Christian Community Center. If we could all stand for the invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we just thank you. This is the day that you have made. We have so many reasons to rejoice and to be glad in it. Father, we thank you for every blessing, both big and small, and heart to receive them both the same, that we may never be guilty of taking your blessings for granted. We thank you for life, and that more abundantly. We thank you for the joy of the Lord, which is our strength. We thank you for the peace of God that surpasses all understanding that guards our hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. And Father, we thank you for this great city of Portsmouth, Virginia. Father, your word declares that, except the Lord build a house, they that labor, labor in vain. Well, Father, we ask not only for your assistance in building houses throughout this city, but God, help us to build this city into a home. God, we ask your blessing over this leadership. May they not only govern this meeting, but govern this city with the Spirit of servanthood. For it is Jesus who said of himself, for even the son of man did not come to be served, but to be a servant unto all. He also said, he that's greatest among you will be your servant. And so, Father, I pray that our great leadership will measure their greatness by their service to we, the citizens. And lastly, Father, we ask your blessing on this meeting. You declare in your word, come, let us reason together, and that's what we intend to do on tonight. May this not be time spent, but time invested, and may we all receive a return on this investment that we call the gift of time. May your will be done, may our wills be broken and submitted to yours. In Jesus mighty, matchless, magnificent name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Goodman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will now ask my colleagues to please note your presence electronically.
Seven members of the City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have the minutes of a called meeting on February 25th, 2025, and a regular meeting on February 25th, 2025, and a called meeting on March 7th and 8th, 2025. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is City Council rules, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the City Council rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you'll notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first agenda item will be public hearings, and the first item is 25-85. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. A public hearing on a proposal from Verizon Virginia LLC to renew a cable franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system within and through the city.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing item, and you are not required to have signed up to speak on this particular item. If you choose to come and speak to this public hearing item, you will have five minutes. We will ask that you state your name and address once you come forward. Is there anyone who wishes to come and speak to this public hearing item? Seeing none, we will take the vote in our City Managers section of the agenda. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. Our next item is City Managers' Report on the Agenda, item 25-86. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting shelter plus care funds in the amount of $780,395 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide housing and supportive services for chronically homeless individuals and families.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have one registered speaker for this item. Ms. Donna Biggs, ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Donna Biggs. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. We honor the agriculture of the Cherslin area by the motto of the Cherslin Middle School, the home of the truckers. Due to the concern that is being addressed in our area of Cherslin currently regarding zoning, building permits, and transportation requests, I am doing research on the money being spent by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in Portsmouth. Agenda item 25-86 is to buy funds in the amount of $780,395 coming from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and appropriating the money in the for the year 2025 to 2026 budget. These funds are to provide housing and supportive services for the chronically homeless individuals and families. I wrote a FOIA to learn how this funding got appropriated and a list of how this money was going to be used specifically. I also needed the copy of the disbursement sheet to show the people how this money was going to be spent. I emailed the request on 20th of March. There was no response to let me know if there were any issues for asking for the documents to support the need for the money and how many people it would enable them to become self-sufficient. So, in the oath of office, people say that they solemnly swear that they will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that they will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I thought this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God. So, looking at our municipal organizational chart of the city, everyone will see that the people have sovereign powers by the Virginia Constitution Bill of Rights. And Section 2 of the Bill of Rights reads that the people are the source of power. It reads that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, that public civil officers invested with executive or legislative branch of government are the people's trustees and performs tasks for the people, and at all times may be disciplined by the people. This is why I am speaking tonight, to follow the guidelines of our Constitution Bill of Rights and enforcing my right and my duty given to me to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I make this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully do my duty as a sovereign residence of Portsmouth, on which I have dedicated my life to serve my people, so help me God. My duty is to address the failure of the Director of Behavioral Health Services to respond to sovereign residents' requests for how the funding from HUD is to be spent. I have done my duty to report this ill will done to a sovereign residence who has requested knowledge to prevent taxation without representation, so help me God.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Please, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
The next item, item 25-87. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance establishing a personal property tax relief percentage of 50% for calendar year 2025 personal property tax bills.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-88. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an access agreement and related documents to allow the United States Navy to construct a sewer line under portions of Green Street and Portsmouth Boulevard to serve the naval shipyard.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is for Mr. Carter. Any idea, have they provided a timeline for completion and any impact to our residents?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, there is a timeline. They're anticipating getting started with this as soon as we can give them approval to do so, and it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think they said like 180 days to actually get all of this completed. There is going to be some impact because they're going to actually cross a couple of streets with this, but most of it is through an easement that's already in place that we're going to allow them onto the same easements that we're in. But there will be impact, but it won't be sustained or very much impact.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Council members, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
The next item, item 25-89. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance granting a renewal of a non-exclusive cable franchise to Verizon Virginia LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the city of Portsmouth.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
A second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six one.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item 25-90. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution declaring that the city of Portsmouth will provide the workers' compensation resumptions under Virginia Code Section 65.2-402B to salary emergency medical services personnel.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a registered speaker for this item. Tiffany Stewart, ma'am, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Tiffany Stewart. I'm a full-time paramedic for the city of Portsmouth. I'm our union's Executive Vice President, and tonight I'm here representing the men and women that serve your city as EMS providers. We're here tonight because of a serious oversight, one that could have, that should have never happened, and one that was only caught because our union caught it. For years, EMS providers were led to believe that we were covered under heart and lung These are the same protections that our firefighter brothers and sisters have had for years, but no resolution was actually passed. This means that paramedics who endure the same toxic exposures and health risks as firefighters have been left unprotected. And without this resolution, a medic that is diagnosed with a heart or lung disorder from their job would see their workman's comp claim denied. Despite the important nature of this issue, it has taken four years and four city managers to get this far and make it an agenda item, all to implement a change that costs the city almost nothing. The fiscal impact of this resolution is an insurance premium increase that costs less than a penny. It is a negligible cost that has somehow required endless bureaucratic delays. This is exactly why collective bargaining is necessary. When protections like this fall through the cracks, it proves that employees need a formal collaborative process to prevent these mistakes before they happen. Our health and safety should not be dependent on catching administrative oversights. At the beginning of this year, two members of our department died. Chris Jones and Kelsey Pittman were our brothers in service, and they gave their lives to this job. Neither of them lived to see 50. Our members do not have endless time to wait. I commend city management for their quick response once this discrepancy was discovered. And I do believe that tonight, council intends to do the right thing, and I urge you to. Please, pass Resolution 29-25-90 and give your dedicated public servants the protection we thought we had years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our City Managers' Report. We are now moved on to new business. Our new business item, first item, is 25-91, Boards and Commissions. And I ask of Councilman Hugel, do we have any board or commission information?
We do not. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next item is item 25-92, items submitted by council members. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution adopting the vision and mission statements of the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I ask Mr. Carter to read our vision and mission statement, I just want to let everyone know in the audience that our council recently had a council retreat, and as a part of the retreat, we worked very hard as a team to come up with this vision and mission for our city, and it is a guidepost for us as leaders in our community to do the things that we desire to do as a community, to make our city the best community that we can make it. So, with that said, Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The vision for the Portsmouth City Council, we envision a vibrant waterfront city where every individual feels safe and empowered while celebrating our rich history. Our diverse community embodies hope, resilience, and lifelong learning while fostering an innovative environment where all residents can flourish and contribute to a harmonious future. The mission, to provide effective, responsive, and innovative services that enhance the quality of life and create a sense of belonging for all residents, promote economic growth, and foster a safe and inclusive community.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
A second. Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Any additional items to be submitted by council members? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just one item to alert folks that have been following the Crime and Gun Violence Task Force. Normally, those meetings are on the first Monday evening of the month, next month in April. We actually have a City Council work session that evening, so we'll be pushing the Crime and Gun Violence Task Force meeting to the second Monday night in April, April the 14th. It'll be 6 o'clock here on the sixth floor of City Hall. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Today in our country is Medal of Honor Day, which occurs every March 25th. You know, the Medal of Honor is the United States Armed Forces' highest military declaration awarded to recognize acts of valor by American soldiers, sailors, Marines, airmen, guardians, and Coast Guardsmen. And we have actually eight Medal of Honor winners in Portsmouth. I like to read their names. I think it's important that we remember them on this day and every day, actually. The first one is Private Charles Veal, Major Raymond Wilkins, First Lieutenant Richard Shea Jr., and Richard Shea Jr. was actually a student and a track star at Cherslin High School. He was awarded the Medal of Honor for his valor during the Korean War. Quartermaster James H. Jordan, L.M. James F. O'Connor, S.M. David D. Barlow, and Lieutenant Colonel Wendell C. Neville. And down at the North Harbor where the flag is, their names are on the plaque there. And I think I mentioned, Mr. Manager, before your turn, that that plaque actually...
We can't hear you, Mr. Moody.
I think initially it was put there by the Portsmouth Flag Association, and it does need to be reconditioned, but I think it's important that we mention their names on this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. And Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a long time since we sat up here, so I just wanted to mention a couple of things. We all have been out busy, aside from doing the retreat, doing events, visiting people in the community, so want to congratulate Dr. Washington on a successful coldest night of the year, which seems like a very long time ago, but it did occur since our last meeting. We did have a wonderful retreat, and it was really exciting to hear the vision and mission statement come out tonight, so very glad that you all got to hear that. It was a very valuable experience to work with you all to put that together. We also, several of us were able to attend the Starbase Banquet this last month, which was a great way to celebrate STEM activities in our city, and we absolutely have one of the top STEM programs in the country, and so it's wonderful to celebrate that. Lastly, I want to congratulate Cub Scout Pack 207 on a successful Pinewood Derby. It was my pleasure to serve as your grand marshal and start the races this last week. We all know that scouting is really very important to our community and builds good citizenship, so it was my pleasure to attend. Couple of things, Mr. Manager, I did bring up to you a few weeks ago, the boat down by the Love sign. I know that we've had several, and it takes a grant process and a long time to move those boats, but if we could get a follow-up on the process of removing that boat, which unfortunately is right next to a very well photographed part of our city. And one other point I wanted to bring up, I did receive a call this week about the safety regarding trash and recycling trucks as they back up within our neighborhoods and the dangers that that might impose on children or cars, and if we could have a discussion about the safety of trash trucks backing up on residential streets, if that's something that we could develop some training around or safety measures around.
Mr. Manager, sir, you have the floor.
Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. We will definitely have some safety briefings inside the general services waste management area concerning that, so we'll take care of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tillage, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As we conclude the month of March, I just want to make sure that we pay homage to Women's History Month and all of the contributions that women have played, not only in American history, but in world history and also local history here in the city of Portsmouth. In the 167 years of the city of Portsmouth, we've not had but seven women serve on the Portsmouth City Council, and so I just want to take a minute to acknowledge those individuals, Gloria Webb, L. Louise Lucas, Marlene Verandal, Elizabeth Simmons, Lisa Lucas Burke, and then my two new colleagues, Yolanda Edmonds-Thomas, as well as Catherine Bryant. For the city to be 167 years old and to only have five women, it speaks volumes, but I'm proud that to be able to serve, to have at least served with three of those women on City Council, and I look forward to hopefully having more women serving leadership roles, and then also to, two of our women are on the dais to my left, our City Attorney, who is soon to be a Circuit Court Judge in the city of Portsmouth. Very commendable. Then also, our City Clerk, Ms. Deborah White. And I can't forget Ms. Anita on the end as well, but thank you to all the women who serve to help to make the community and the world a better place. Just thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. First, thank you so much, Councilwoman Tillage. That was very thoughtful, and I agree. I look forward to more women serving in leadership, and I'm thankful to serve in this position along with my colleague, Councilwoman Bryant. I just wanted to say, share with the citizens that a few of us, we did attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. What's that been, two weeks ago now? It was very, it was my first conference, but it was very informative. We had a chance to meet with our federal legislators, Congressman Bobby Scott, Senator Tim Kane, and the staff of Senator Mark Warner, and we had a chance to talk about some pressing issues and advocate for some issues that directly impact our city. One, we discussed, and I'm happy that our leadership, executive leadership, is on the forefront of looking at the possible impact of any federal freeze grants have on the city. We looked at numbers provided from ODU and impacting Portsmouth alone $1.1 billion in possible economic impact with any federal grant freeze. Thankfully, we're looking into that, you know, preparing for anything, and we're ready for that, and our leadership is ready for that as well. We also talked about some other pressing issues that have been on the table for a while, but reminding our legislators that we want to advocate for payment in lieu of taxes with some of our federal entities here, and also the grants surrounding the Innovation District. So, it was a very good conference, a very good time spent with our federal legislators, letting them know like, hey, don't forget about Portsmouth, and it was a pleasure to meet with them one-on-one to advocate for the citizens. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And a couple of last items, first of, a couple of last items. First of all, we recently lost, we recently lost one of our city attorneys here in our city attorney's office, Special City Attorney, Mr. Bob Marriage, and there will be a book signing in memory of Mr. Bob Marriage, a book dedication ceremony at the Portsmouth Public Library on Thursday, March 27, at 3:00 p.m., and everyone is encouraged to come and participate. Bob was a great advocate for the citizens of the city of Portsmouth and a fine gentleman, and I would hope that we turn out and show respect for Mr. Bob Marriage. In addition to that, my good friend, Dr. McKinley Price, who is the former mayor of Newport News, recently lost his wife, Mrs. Valerie Scott Price. Dr. Price is one of those guys that is a very special person, as was his wife, to me. They were partly mentors to me, and I learned a lot from them, so I would ask that you remember Mrs. Valerie Scott Price in your prayers. Valerie Scott Price in your prayers and the Price family during this difficult time. Lastly, the Tenth Annual Bunny Hop will be coming up. The Bunny Hop, for all you bunny hoppers, little babies, people that got kids, come on out to the Tenth Annual Bunny Hop, 5K Run, One Mile Walk. It benefits the Children's Museum of Virginia. Yours truly will be out there hopping with the bunnies, too. So come on out for the Bunny Hop, have, have some exercise, and, you know, register to participate. It's a good event. That concludes the items. It is the fifth of April, so next Saturday, and you can register online. We'll send out the information and make sure you can register for the Bunny Hop online. And that concludes our, our items submitted by council. We'll now move on to report on pending items. Item twenty-five dash ninety-three, and Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have been a while since we've been together, but you do have the report back that we've sent, so please take a look at that. If you see anything that you need further assistance on, please let me know. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have now come to the item twenty-five dash ninety-four, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the, excuse me, at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you could, excuse me, conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, excuse me, rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience. It should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker this evening will be Mr. Leon Hammond. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Good evening, sir.
My name is Leon Hammond, Bowie Court. I've been, I guess, preaching to the choir about the gift cards to Noah Vale. Been ten months now. I don't know why, it's been falling on deaf ears. You got 2,114 gift cards. They have been reduced every month. They are down to, the hundred-dollar ones are down to seventy-five dollars. The five-hundred-dollar ones is down to four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Now, if I'm wrong, let me know. I definitely apologize. One thing I'd like to know is, why are we sitting on them when people could use them? It doesn't make any sense. I've been here. Now, I know we got a few new members of council, so I'm not going to put you in definitely the same category I put the others in, but I'm ashamed of council, because council should have been pushing this, should have been asking questions on their own. Why are we holding them? You're depriving the city of Portsmouth their due, and it doesn't make any sense. It's not right. Those gift cards supposed to be distributed, all of them, to the citizens. That's why you would get them. There's no excuse in it. Now, if you're not going to distribute them, say so. But I'm not going to continue to get up here and say, because I'm willing to go across the water and ask some questions over there. Because that's federal money. And I'm quite sure, under this new administration from Donald Trump, it's considered a waste. We're wasting money that people could use, even though it's only for seventy-five dollars. Stop sitting on them, ignoring it. The people should have what is due to them. There's no need of saying that all of them have been given out. You got 2,114 one-hundred-dollar, so-called one-hundred-dollar gift cards still there in somebody's office, desk, wherever. You got 314 five-hundred-dollar ones. There's no excuse in it. People can use that little bit of money, especially nowadays, and you all were not elected, not elected to deprive the city of Portsmouth of what is due to them. Now, if you're going to be depriving the city of Portsmouth what is due to them, no need of being there. There's no need of being up front here. So all I can say is, I'm gonna come back, but when I come back, I'm gonna come back with some help. Because I, I don't mind going across the water to the Fed building and ask some questions over there. In other words, what was the city of Portsmouth supposed to do with those gift cards? Were they supposed to sit on them or just hold them for no reason now? So thank you.
Councilman Hugo, you have the floor.
So, Mr. State Manager, could you provide an update on the progress that you've made on the gift cards?
Yes, sir.
City Manager Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Concerning the gift cards, that has been kind of hanging around the city of Portsmouth for quite some time. You know, one of the first things we had to do was do a complete audit on everything that has transpired with the gift cards. We did have a, a external firm come in and take a look at the whole process of the gift cards to ensure us that what we had is what we're supposed to have, and there's not been anything nefarious that has happened concerning the gift cards or the programs that were associated with gift cards. We have, since that time, placed an RFP to have a nonprofit organization come in to put a program together to distribute the gift cards. We're in the process now of the final negotiations with that nonprofit to see what the actual contract between the city and that nonprofit will be to distribute the remainder of those gift cards. The goal is to have all of those gift cards distributed in the next ninety days so that the gift card saga that surrounds Portsmouth will be over and done with forever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Ms. Sinise Johnson. Ms. Johnson, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening, counsel, Vice Mayor and Mayor Shannon Glover. I've been coming down here for quite a few years, and there's a lot that I could say tonight, but I'm not going to elaborate on it. And I want to thank Mr. Moody, because he's been, been along the way, my journey along the way, and he's supported me. And just recently, Mayor Shannon Glover speeded up some renovations out there in the Cavalier Manor community, and I appreciate that. But I came to you this afternoon because I'm concerned about these real estate taxes. I purchased my first home when I was twenty-five years old in Suffolk. I still own the property. Now I own a piece of property, and family property in Cavalier Manor, and I was at the Civic League meeting, and a lot of the homeowners out in the Cavalier Manor, they are very, very frustrated and about these, the increases in our taxes. I think if I'm correct, if I'm, if I'm not correct, I wish you would correct me. I think for the last ten years, we've been getting an increase in our real estate taxes. And I look at the, 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 the stormwater fee. The stormwater fee used to be like seven dollars, and this was over twenty, twenty, thirty years ago. Now that's gone up to forty-three dollars, you know what I mean? And my concern is, we have a lot of vested, committed homeowners in Portsmouth, and I'm one of them. And the reason I stay here, out of love for the, for my community and a love for this city. And I could have moved on twenty-five, thirty years ago. But my concern is, is the fact that now I'm a retired, young, female professional, and although I get a lot of substantial income coming in, all of my, all of my money now is going out for real estate taxes. And I wanted to know, do you all understand that you can tax homeowners out of their homes? There's a lot of seniors in Cavalier Manor that are retired, they're retired professionals, and they're elderly people, and they're complaining, too. Some women are, a couple of women are ninety-four years old, and they told me because of their income, they can only get a partial free fees. So that's my concern. I love Portsmouth, and I want to stay here, you know what I mean? And not only do we have to pay taxes on our property, you have to think about the upkeep. We like beautiful lawns, you know, nice roof on your house, bay windows, and we've done a lot of investment to our property. I think we've probably spent over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on a corner lot in Cavalier Manor. And I've hired a lot of contractors to come and do work for me, because a lot of times I have to do other things, and so I don't, I can't cut grass anymore. I know how to cut grass, but I got a contractor to cut my grass and everything. And with the increase in the taxes, I'm gonna have to fire a lot of people this summer. Because if I don't, if something don't happen, I'm gonna have to come out of retirement and go, may probably go back to teaching. And I spend a lot of my, my time, my retirement time, giving back to I.C. Norcom, I'm a lifetime member of I.C. Norcom, a lifetime member of Old Dominion, a lifetime member of Northwest State University. And what we do, we give scholarships to the kids. And I know you know that I.C. Norcom is the second-largest prominent high school in the United States. I think they are number one is Dunbar. And so I give to a lot of causes, you know, and I don't mind. That's what I love to do. But it takes away from, it takes away from my finances. And these are high real estate taxes, you know, you all need to take a look at it, you know, because when they built the casino, I really didn't want to vote for the casino. But I ended up voting for it because they were saying that the casino would bring in revenue, because we have the government installations, and you know, we have the, these churches, we have a church on every corner, you know. And so I end up voting for the casino, and I don't even gamble, you know. But I wish you all would take a look, you know, at it, and I don't know who's, who is in charge of raising these taxes and who's in control of it, but we've been told that they won't, our taxes weren't going to be raised. And now every time I look up, we get a bill that the taxes is going up. Mine is going up this year to twenty-seven-hundred dollars, you know, a probably an increase of one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I have a neighbor, she had her property, beautiful brick home, and she told me she'll be paying forty-one-hundred dollars, you know. So I wish you all would take a, take a look at it, because I want to stay in Portsmouth. I don't want to have to sell the property and move back to Suffolk, because I own a home in Suffolk. And I would like to stay here. I've been here, I was raised here, I was born here, but I've been here all my life, you know, and I love this city. Although I don't spend twenty-four-seven here, you know, but I love Portsmouth, and I want to stay here. And I wish you all would take a look at that, you know what I mean? Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll. If you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Steve Carroll, and I reside in Portsmouth. As I make my comments tonight, I'd like counsel to ponder a very simple concept consisting of one simple word, home, specifically homeownership. Sixty-nine years I've spent here, if you include the years I went barefoot, and I've called it home. Home to me was where my mom and dad worked all day and came home, but I still had time, or I had time with my dad where he threw ball with me, because I had a home that was invested in, built by my mom and dad. Little tiny impressions of feet and hands in concrete that was dated, that signified something very important. It was home, members of council, that we put our time and our money, our blood, sweat, and tears into. The home I came home to, I never once had to worry about walking the half-mile when I was five years old in kindergarten, because mom and dad put me out to go while they went to work. I never worried once about a drug dealer or a drug addict or a pedophile or any other vermin criminal bothering me. And that's the way it ought to be. No mother in this city should ever have to depend on eight inches of concrete to separate them from that kind of danger in their home. I consider myself a pretty level-headed, easygoing person. I don't get bent out of shape about too many things. I try not to overreact. I'm careful not to underreact. But let me make you perfectly, leave you clear on one thing. A threat to my family or my community is something that gets my attention quickly and decisively. And a threat to my community is tantamount to a threat to my family. And that means a threat to any other single-family community in this city is a threat to all of us. Apartments have a place, but they don't belong intermingled or within single-family residential areas, because time and time again, it shows that they bring problems, whether it devalues property. You just heard our invocation, the word home. It's important. It's important. It means something. It means something, and we have to protect it. Because let me tell you, without our single-family homes, there is no city of Portsmouth. It ceases to exist. I'm being very general tonight for a reason, because you're going to see my shining face again. What this is all about is my concern about what is proposed to happen on West Norfolk Road that's going to negatively impact, from what I hear already, a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of conflicting information. And it needs to be cleared up. But if we have to change the zoning, and we change the zoning to keep apartments out of or away from residential, single-family neighborhoods, nothing wrong with an apartment. I've lived in two in Portsmouth. One of them was a roach-infested, crime-infested hellhole, but it's where I had to live. I've owned two houses in Portsmouth, and I plan to keep them, and I expect people to respect the sanctity of home. I will see you again on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Biggs. Ms. Biggs, if you would come up, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Donna Biggs. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. I will faithfully do my duty as a sovereign resident of Portsmouth, on which I have dedicated my life to serve my people, so help me God. So what is the first step to serve my people? The first step is to learn how to communicate, to build relationships. How do people learn how to communicate? How do people learn how to communicate? Why is communication important? We learn to communicate in our homes with our parents. Suppose that doesn't happen. Communication breaks down, communication break down, causes an inability to form relationships. The information I received from Michael... Well, I might find it eventually. I'm not gonna find it. But anyway, the information I have received from Michael, the representative of Bible Tracks Incorporated, reported in his ministry, working with churches, marriages, parents and children, and even working with employees and employers. He has seen a lack of communication that has caused many problems that could have been easily fixed. Do the people know what his or her needs are to be able to communicate with each other? Our homes are the foundation to provide the survival needs and safety, security needs. There are other needs to be fulfilled as well. Since this is a public agenda, there needs to be a structured format for the people to know who is responsible for what... Is responsible for their responsibilities to be carried out for the survival and safety of the people. Is that available to the people? By an updated municipal organizational chart? If not, why not? How can the people have a municipal organizational chart that helps the people to monitor the spending of their money by the elected and appointed? How does the city provide for the people to learn how to communicate and resolve conflict? Or could ask the leaders of the school system to provide, to teach students to resolve conflict? So there are things, there's information. What process does the school system use to resolve conflict? If they don't have a process, then someone could give them information to help teach students how to resolve conflict issues. Do they want to learn any skills? If they do, there's the restorative practice that is available, as well as the community justice panels. There's also mental health awareness events to help with mental health issues. The last concern that needs to be addressed is one regarding, how are we honoring the military? We already did it today. And also, how are the battlefields been honored? How is it going to be honored? Who is going to honor the people who sacrificed to make our country, our state, and our local city able to be a major support to our economy around the world? How? How's the communication here? Who represents me in Cherslin?
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Sergio O'Neill. Sir, if you would come forward, you have five minutes. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Sergio O'Neill. I reside at 1420 M Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. One thing I wanted to address tonight is something that is near and dear to me. You know, I'm a big fan of community relations, and being our community grassroots organizations partnering with our city. One thing I've come to notice is that there is a issue when it comes to our city, our community organizations using our city facilities. Apparently, there is a misnomer, and I hope it's not true, that certain organizations are gaining preference over others on the circumstances on which they are agreed upon to use the city facilities. For example, there are, is it all community organizations, are they all required to carry a $2 million liability insurance policy? Which, let me say, and let me be perfectly clear, that I get it. Because at the end of the day, there is a liability, there is a risk factor when you partner with community organizations. You know, things could happen that could indefinitely fall on the city. However, is this across the board when it comes to community organizations using the facilities? Or is it up to a individual or individuals with an S to make that decision on who gets, who has to carry this type of liability insurance, and who does not? Because let me say this, you know, a lot of these organizations, these community-based organizations, you know, a lot more often times than not, they don't get local, state, or federal funding at all. Most of the finances that come from these organizations come out of the kindness of the leadership of those organizations. Like, and I can take for myself as being part of one, and I'm not asking the city for any money, because I would work every day, I will make sure that whatever my organization, if I can, has it. Because that's just me. But, you know, I have no issue with that. But speaking for, you know, as an overall whole, you know, I understand, I can't carry that weight by myself. So, you know, anytime I feel like that, when these organizations come, you know, and they're really a proven organization within the city, and, you know, they have, you know, very, a lot of value within the city as to what the services they provide for free, or at a greatly reduced cost to the city, if, at all, is that what can the city do? So if the city says, hey, you know, we are requiring you to carry this liability insurance, is this something that's posed up front? Then two, is there somewhere along the city budget that says, hey, you know, I see this organization, I see they're trying, I know what this can cost, because those policies aren't cheap. You know, I mean, some people might say it was only $500, whatever the case might be, you know, it could be more or less, depending on where you go, right? But that $500 is a line item, it's still within that organization's budget, that has to be covered. So what if you're dealing with kids that don't have that money? Then what do you do? You say, hey, two, three, five leaders, hey, you now have an extra $500,000 burden that you're coming out of your pocket with. Man, some people, you know, they have, all of them have their own households to finance. But yet still, we collectively sacrifice to make those things happen. But I just want to make sure that we are being fair across the board. Because see, one thing I do know about this city that has happened before, is that certain organizations were given preference over others, and those council peoples responsible for that are now gone from this council. And I, and y'all know me, I don't beat around the bush, and I don't sugarcoat nothing. I said when this council was elected in November of last year, that we were going to change the tide. Which, I, for what I've seen so far, the communications I've had regarding this matter from those council peoples that have reached out, it's been fair and consistent across the board, as to make sure that we can get this issue resolved. However, I'm bringing it to the forefront, because we, unfortunately, we had, the news even had to get involved, to say, what is still happening? Why are we going back in this cycle? Well, we have this, we have organizations that are proven, that are still struggling to, you know, and, you know, communication is very, very, one of those, the biggest thing I'm on is communication, is to make sure that these organizations know upfront what the real deal is, so we can go ahead and prepare upfront for what's gonna happen. And I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a step back and say, if there's something I'm missing, please feel free to reach out and ring my phone, email me, whatever the case might be, and say, this is what the situation actually is. Therefore, I can compare information, because one thing about me, and two things for sure, I don't do spending. There are three sides to every story, yours, mine's, and the actual truth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to address, or ask some questions around what Mr. Neal just brought up regarding facility use, I think is a bigger question. So while Mr. Neal was just talking, I was just trying to look up on our website, what is our overarching facility use policy, coming from the school board? We do have a, the school board has a facility use policy for their schools, and it's, you know, pretty automated for the most part. And I see Parks and Rec, for example, has application for use of facility, but it's more so for room rental and so forth. Do we have an overall facility, I guess, longer-term facility usage, facility rental, or something like that in place? Or do we only have what is currently stated on our Parks and Rec website? Mr. Manager.
City Manager, you have the floor.
Unfortunately, Councilwoman Thomas, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay.
I would hope, and that is actually a hope, that there is a policy that says whoever rents, or whoever is gonna hold some event, or any, whatever the case may be, if you're gonna use a city facility, there's a standard process that has to happen. I will investigate to ensure that there is. If there isn't, there will be one put in place.
Okay, there definitely is an application, but it's more so for room rental at a facility. And I think Mr. Neal is talking about something longer-term.
Yeah, I think he's talking about some long-term use from organizations that...
Right, or even a consistent more... So if, for example, I'll just give an example from the school, like, there's some sports rec league that rent, that use the facility on an ongoing basis, the schools, but they have a, you know, they have to go through an application process for that, considering a lot of different factors. And so I don't know if we have that, but if we could look into, if you could look into that, thank you, I appreciate that. So we can get that cleared up.
Absolutely. And I know that we do MOUs with some organizations sometimes, so that will facilitate that agreement at some point. But I want to, I'll take a look to make sure that there is an even-handed way of handling that. Yes, ma'am.
Attorney, Attorney Graham Williams, ma'am, you have the floor.
I think it's also important to remember, depending on the use of the facility, there are going to be risk management requirements that will sometimes dictate an insurance policy to be used, particularly if you're having off-duty police officers present on the facility, or if it's a set of circumstances that require the use of liability based on the fact that the city is self-insured, which puts us in a very different position. So there, it's fact-specific, when it's specific when it gets to our office, in terms of advice, what's gonna be required. So there's not gonna be a uniform basis for insurance purposes, because it's driven by the facts and circumstances of the activity. But the application, the selection in that process should always be across the board, fair and impartial, and done in an objective way. But there are gonna be circumstances where other things are required. And I don't know what the circumstances was in the one you mentioned, Mr. Neal, but I do want you to consider that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the requirement for liability insurance is not only within a facility, but it's on city property. I know there was a time where we didn't require the liability insurance. I don't think there was an incident that I can recall that made that a requirement, but I would like for us to look into it, because it does run counterproductive. We have nonprofits that are supporting the city, and do a lot of work in the city. When they have an event to raise money, then they're hit with a pretty hefty bill on obtaining liability insurance. So if, Mr. Manager, if you could maybe come back with some recommendations, I know this is probably something you haven't heard before.
Have a stumble.
Yep. And get back with us and see what, how the other cities handle that as well. Because I do hear from nonprofits that are trying to raise money to help our cause, that we turn around and require them to buy liability insurance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Walter Carter. Mr. Carter, if you're here, sir, you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Moody, the rest of the city council. My name is Walter Carter, live 1401 Watts Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. It's been a little better than a year since I've been here. I usually attend the council meetings. I had a knee replacement, that took me out for a while. Then I had another incident to happen, and that kept me out. But I'm looking at you guys on YouTube, and I am seeing something that I didn't see in the other council. I'm looking at a new city council, and I'm beginning to like what I see. And you guys have a lot on you. And I know it's not easy to sit up there and look at someone that's putting you down, and you really can't come back. And that hurts a lot of times. But if you hold your peace, and let the Lord fight your battle, I guarantee you that this city council would set this city where it needs to be. If you guys, what I have seen, just looking at you on YouTube, it's a new council. And I don't see the bickering and battering and going at one another that I saw in the last city council. It's two or three of you that's new on the council. Get some understanding from the people that has been there, done that, and is doing that. And this council will go where it needs to be. And really, I applaud you guys. I do. One guy that carries my name, and I know that when he came, that it was gonna be a difference because of his name. But you guys take in what you need, and do what you need to do to take this council and this city forward, and you will be all right. And I believe that if we, the people, will help the city council to do what they need to do, instead of coming down on them so hard, because even when a person do wrong, they don't want to be beat down. And especially when a person is trying to do what is right, they definitely don't want to be down. So let's help our city council, and stand behind them, and support them, and I guarantee you, our city will go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And Mr. Carter, I didn't know, did you mean, is this your cousin up here, or what? That part?
We gonna look into that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. James Smith. Smith, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, council members, city manager. My name is James Smith. I'm a Cavalier Manor resident, and I am here on behalf of Virginia Organizing, a nonpartisan political action group. Also present tonight are volunteers from Breakfast Feeding Program, sponsored by Zion Baptist, Ebenezer Baptist Church, which serves the homeless and other vulnerable individuals in our community. Also, I would be remiss if I did not mention Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, Oasis, so many other churches and organizations in Portsmouth, and the most, in surrounding areas which serve the most vulnerable in our community in so many ways. Also, there are members of our homeless community tonight here with us. Would all those here in support of our homeless issue please stand? Would all those here in support of our homeless issue please stand? Since our last council meeting, we are encouraged by the progress the city has made in addressing the issue. With the collaboration of the city manager, Dr. Washington, of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, Lieutenant Sarad, Ms. Anna McCray of the Emergency Management Center, and other stakeholders who were involved in this process, we are encouraged by the following: the establishment of the Overnight Warming Center at the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless Shelter, which was available during inclement weather; the increasing of the capacity of the shelter from 20 to 27 to handle overflow during the inclement weather; the streamlining of the process to admit people to the shelter; the provision of meals by the city for the overflow; the establishment of a pickup point at Department of Social Services during the snowstorm between 12:30 and 1:00 p.m.; the establishment of the hotline that one can call to get shelter information; marketing this information on Wavy TV 10 by Dr. Washington and on the city's Portsmouth Volunteers for Homeless website. My colleague GW Thompson called the Emergency Management Hotline during the snowstorm, but the message regarding the shelter had not been posted. With the upcoming hurricane season and hot weather, we would encourage that this be done in a timely manner. We are grateful that the city will put this message on the city's website, but some of the homeless people do not have cell phones and may not be familiar with the access to the website. So we also recommend signage and flyers at critical places where they frequent, such as the Oasis, the Library, Behavior Health, and Zion Baptist Breakfast Feeding Program. Ms. Anna McCray for the Emergency Management Department has agreed to meet with members of the faith community to determine how we can all work together to address this issue. Lastly, consider implementing a backup plan in the event that there is an overflow at the shelter. Thank you, city council, for your politician and support on this issue.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Andy Sutter. Mr. Sutter, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Evening, council. Mr. Mayor, I'm Andy Sutter, 10 Crawford Parkway. Ms. Bryant, I have information on that love, but the boat sitting behind a love sign. If you want to take it offline, I can help you out, maybe get it removed, just in case. Mr. Carter, dude, I am underdressed. That was real good. So you know this guy up here?
Yes, sir.
He's okay for Air Force. I'm just saying. Oh, you were Air Force, too? Admiral, we could have to talk to them. Their football team's not so good, is it? All right, start my time. Ms. White, nice to meet you finally in person after those messages last week. Okay, let's get to business. In 2021, I contacted Mr. Mayor and the city manager, Mrs. Jones at the time, regarding the discrepancy in the boat taxes that I pay to the city of Portsmouth compared to the other two cities that I do business in. Portsmouth is currently taxing my pleasure craft at the commercial tax rate similar to tugboats, working boats, and commercial vessels. My boats are pleasure crafts, pontoons, sea rays, bowriders, and deck boats. My boats, though, so they're at a... I'm sorry, got off track, sorry. That could be taxed at the pleasure craft rate at 50 cents per hundred. So for reference, Newport News assesses my boats at $1 per hundred, and Portsmouth charges me $5 per hundred. So let me put that into an example for you. A 2023 Kobia Center Consul fishing boat assessed at $36,432, and Newport News costs me $364 a year per boat in tax. Portsmouth, I have to pay $1,821 per boat. It's a major discrepancy. So $364 in Newport News, $1,821 in Portsmouth. I brought this matter to city council last year, and I emailed everybody, and I have support of some of the former council members and some of the past council members. I've spoken with Commissioner Edmondson, Councilman Hugel, and Councilman Tillage, Trey Burke, and I had a meeting with the Assistant City Attorney Stromberg, but we still do not have a resolution to this matter. Remember, I started in 2021 with Ms. Jones. Last August 2024, it was discussed by this council to revise the city tax code language to classify Boat Club boats to similar private boats, which would then tax our boats at a substantially lower rate, more in line with what I pay the other Hampton Roads localities. That rate is 50 cents per hundred, lowering the tax on my boat from $1,821 per year to $182 per year. This current tax rate is out of date, and it's preventing me from growing my business here in Portsmouth. Everybody knows Freedom Boat Club, but I can't get more boats in here because I can't pay the tax rate, so I can't bring more people into the city. They're not buying the gas at the marina, they're not visiting fishing slips. It's an issue. So I would like for the council to revisit this matter before the next assessment comes out, so I don't have to pay the tax. Thanks for your time and consideration in this matter. Right on time.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers for this evening. If there's not any other business for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.